So three.
Okay.
Sitting on actually.
Yes.
Um, and does anybody wanna read the minutes from last month?
Do you want me to read them since I wrote them?
Sure.
Our March nineteenth, twenty twenty four meeting called to order at six thirteen P M. President Director Jen Crosby, Chairman Paula Bollier, Nita Abbott, Denise Conti, Janice Hook, Candace Rivera, absent Helen Hurtow, Terry LaPrada, Kate Mercier, and Michelle Petrus. Minutes of last month's trustee meeting were accepted with amendments with a motion by Janice seconded by Denise, all in favor. Directors report building update. The new computers have been installed, the lighting system is now accessible. A pump in the boiler room was malfunctioning and leaking water. It has since been turned off and will be replaced by the town. Cleaning of the building has been much better, there are no further complaints at this time. Tables and chairs, including Adirondack chairs, are back out in the reading garden. The library's portion of the annual town report and the library's budget for F Y twenty five have both been submitted. There is a need for funds to come from the furniture furnishings fund to cover the extra cost of the new computers. Janice made a motion to use five thousand dollars of the furniture furnishings fund to cover the cost of the new computers, seconded by Candace, all in favor. A notice of the need for new library trustees was sent to all forty-four book group members. Jen will also put the announcement on the library's Facebook page, Jen will make a mention of it at a friends meeting as well. Current statistics update circulation for February twenty twenty four was five thousand two hundred and eighteen items. Total network transfers were three thousand four oh eight, six hundred and ten items received, and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight sent. The library saved the townspeople seventy, sorry, sixty-four thousand dollars. Warrants on one for one thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-three cents for Go Net Speed, Tech M D, Baker and Taylor, Base Can, and Library Journal. One for one thousand two hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents for Baker and Taylor and Midwest Take. And one for six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents for Fire Detection Systems, Go Net Speed, Baker and Taylor, ProQuest, and Tech M D. Janice made a motion for adjournment at six fifty eight P M., seconded by Denise. Next meeting April ninth, twenty twenty four, respectfully submitted.
Jen, did you, did we wanna say anything about, you know, when we talked about the five thousand dollars? Did we wanna say anything there about the change in funding that you had?
We can add that in, um, did we talk about that at the last?
We talked about it and that's why we.
That's why we did that.
For the five thousand, so.
So can we back up a little like that and we had gotten a grant?
Yes, so we did.
That's what she's saying that we didn't put.
But yeah, there's.
The information of the grant in here.
For funds, um, so what happened was the state had, um, offered us a ten thousand dollar grant to get the computers. The friends went ahead, applied for it, we received the okay, we were waiting on the funding to come in. So what they do is they have you purchase it ahead of time and then you submit the receipt to them and they pay you half upfront and then half afterward. Well, the state in the process decided to cut the funding in half from the, um, Department of Travel and Tourism. Which is what, where this was coming from, um, and yeah, they cut fifty percent across the board. I, their institutions much greater than ours that lost a lot more money unfortunately, which is really sad. Um, so then we ended up with ten thousand dollars in computers with only five thousand dollar grant to pay for them, which at that point I wasn't sending back. So we've got the sixty-ish thousand dollars in the furnishings and furniture account, which is, you know, basically what that funding is there for. To cover things like this, it's just unfortunate that it happened.
Like, so. You should be allowed to change them.
I know, I know.
After.
You'll be receiving your funding within thirty days and.
And they made you purchase upfront and then they back off. I think, was there a reason?
Okay.
Was, did they give a reason for that?
It explains why we gave the five thousand, I think it's.
Yeah.
Like, you weren't here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
It needs to be.
Um, anyone wanna little low wording on that?
How about we? Can we table this, the vote next time, once the wording's in? Or?
Oh.
We just. Just put it in?
Um, let's see, so.
This came about after the first sentence, this came about after a change in grant funding from the state of Massachusetts. It was cut in half. Yeah, after. After the grant funding was cut in half.
After the promised grant. Funding of ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars. It was cut in half and left a short five thousand.
Beautiful.
How's that?
Thank you.
Okay.
State of Mass.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Lovely. Director Manager's Report. Thank you, um, our building update, we are changing things over to spring. Um, our donations are being accepted for our book sale until the end of April, so if anyone has donations, we will take them. Um, we've got all of our furniture back except for the front benches, which I will be contacting them to put those back in. Um, I noticed that this morning that our benches are not there, so.
Hopefully there's no more snow.
Yeah, you know, right, well, I mean, we did have a snow day last week, so.
The book sale, what's the date on it?
Um, the book sale will be starting May first.
And it's gonna be in-house?
Yep, we'll have it in our community room for the entire month of May, so we're taking donations until the end of May.
What are you not taking donations of?
We don't take encyclopedias, textbook, dictionaries, any giant volumes.
How about V H Ss?
Um, no V H S or cassette tapes, but we do take D V Ds, video games, anything on C Ds.
I have so many of those.
Wrong, but people don't really use them that much anymore, but we do take, anything on a disc, we'll take.
Video games. So the, is it a month long?
Yep, it'll be a month long, entire month of May.
And you're gonna have, um, something for volunteer?
Yes, so at our next friends meeting, we will talk about having volunteers, we're gonna do a setup day at the end of, I think, April twenty fifth. Because we can, we're set up pretty early, um, yes, but all in conjunction with staff, yeah.
Can you give us a shout out too, cuz, you know.
Sure.
Maybe.
I would love that, I think we're gonna try for a Thursday night, um, setup. We can set up a little earlier this year, which would be nice, it'll give us more time, so, but I will, I will include you guys.
Put a food truck outside, you'll be good to go.
Right, order some pizzas, something.
Just can't have it in the building, but maybe.
As far as our operations update, on the Council on Aging has hired a new director who will be starting, I believe, next week. And, um, we are already thinking about, um, having a homebound patron library delivery collaboration with them. Um, I did have that patron a while back that had expressed interest in doing it through the library. But it was a little tricky with, um, insurance and everything like that, so we are going to collaborate with the Council on Aging. And they really have the avenue of assessing who is homebound in town and how we can reach out to those people. I don't really have that resource on my end, so I think this would be a beautiful collaboration.
Beautiful.
And my patron who's interested can then go and hopefully volunteer through them. And then I could be like a support piece and everything to kind of keep it all happening.
Our volunteer would be delivering the books, I wonder if they would be able to use their vehicles to do that?
Yeah, that's, that's something that they'll have to work out, so there was like an insurance question about whether or not I could get a divorce.
He there, right, just like in the, was it the giver of stars?
They do have like a, I know that will take my students about to take my car, let it do it one time, it was something I already had on my insurance.
Yeah.
Forget the title, there's a name for it.
Yeah.
And I was taking students, which is.
Oh, yeah, like that, I would. At least this would be just.
That's what I'm saying, probably something.
Sorry, did you say that you were gonna meet with the new director?
Yes, soon as they get themselves situated, it's, um, Natalie Archambault.
Natalie Archambault's in town?
Is that part of the Archambault's that donated and everything?
Um, Bernadette, her daughter volunteers here at the library, she's here on Wednesdays, so, yeah. And, uh, we'll, we'll circle back to her because I have Bernadette on our, um, agenda here to talk about.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, so hopefully we'll have a really great collaboration, you know, we're already talking about doing things together, so I'm really hopeful that this will be a really nice match for the community and, um, yeah, doing things together just makes sense. Really could benefit from each other a lot, so I'm really excited for that, and she's wonderful, so I think she'll do a great job. Shifting gears, um, I am currently working on a community survey for our strategic plan that is due, I believe, in December. So I will be putting that out to the community this summer to get all of our data together, you know, what we're gonna be looking at for plans for the next five years of our library life. And, um, so you do have that going, I did attend that workshop, um, and they gave some really great tips and ideas and tricks on the best way to reach people, make sure you have it available, some people like to do print, some people like to do digital, some people don't wanna do it at all. Um, some people will just be word of mouth, um, so we'll be working on that. And then the friends update, the book sale I already did, the plant sale is actually set for Saturday, May eleventh. They changed the date, actually just as of today, so that will be, I believe that is Mother's Day weekend.
I would agree, yeah.
There's something else happening in town that day, so they wanted to kind of collaborate, like piggyback off of each other.
There is, I think there's a, a craft fair, is it the, uh, precipitation?
Yeah, it's a.
So it'll be a nice kind of, have people make a day of it, a little grandy day go around it. Um, so May eleventh, um, they will be looking for volunteers if anyone's interested. Um, our, um, current statistics, circulation for March was five thousand four hundred and thirteen, which is a little bit more than the previous month. Our total network transfers were three thousand three seventy-three, which was six hundred and seventy-two items received and two thousand seven hundred items sent. The library saved the townspeople sixty-five point two thousand dollars, um, which is a definitely increase over last month, we seem to be getting toward our busy time. We're already talking about the summer, it's crazy, um, amping up for our summer reading programs. I am going to be approaching the friends about doing a, um, it's like a crystal terrarium program for the adults. Where you can make your own little plant terrarium and you got crystals to go in, different crystals have different meanings and, um, I've got my eyes set on that as like a summer starter. Yeah, I think it's in June, if I can get the funding for it, it'll be fun, something hands-on, people love doing stuff.
Get together, yeah.
Yeah, get together and do stuff, and she brings, I believe she brings tea, does a little setup too, so you can have tea and make your little terrarium. Who is interested, Bernadette Archambault, she is one of our volunteers here, um, she is, um, interested in being a write-in. So Kathy Hillary Reagan said, all I had to do was call her and let her know, so she can get the word out that this person wants to be a write-in. And then as long as we all, you know, for whoever goes and votes, writes her name in, and, um.
Don't we have more than one position?
We have two, yeah, I haven't really found anyone who's super set on this one.
So if she's gonna be a write-in, does she have to go and get any signature?
No, no, no. Yeah, cuz she kind of missed, uh.
So if one person writes her in.
She basically.
They had, they had.
She has to accept it.
I, I think, well, she goes second.
So we had an opening previously and that's how we got you, Janice.
Right.
You remember we did that, we.
I had, yeah, you guys did a letter or something, cuz you came to me and then you did a letter and I had to just go down and get sworn in.
Yeah, so I, I think we should pursue trying to, again.
Cuz I was on like nine months before, I went up for election. Does anybody wanna, I'm just gonna throw this out again, cuz I knew you had mentioned it before about decreasing the number of trustees. Well, we looked into that.
Did, so we could look into that, it has to be divisible by three, um, so we would have to cut from nine down to six. Um, yeah, so there is that aspect of it, um, and we would have to go, it would have to go to town meeting. And be voted on, like we'd have to get on, then we got to like, yeah, ballot, have it be. Yeah, it's.
Well, the thing with six people is that you could have a tie in voting, and then, then the pressure's on, that's why I always thought it had to be an odd number. Nine is an odd number, you can't, six is an even number, I can't imagine, that's why a lot of boards have three. Although, board I'm going on up there is seven.
Well, the, is it, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners suggests having it divisible by three, so a lot of boards will have three, six, or nine. I think that's how we got to where we are now, um.
It's nice if you have more, you go one.
Have you more, that gives you more options to have a quorum, um, cuz I, I don't know how people with just three trustees do it, I think. Well, the library only has.
So we, if Bernadette is a write-in and nobody else gets written in for them, that position just stays vacant.
Yes, and we can fill it anytime throughout the term, if someone comes around that wants to do it, we would then have to go to a select board meeting and have them approve it and swear the person in.
Yeah, that's what I had to do.
Kind of midterm.
Or, you know, it's more like brow, browbeating someone into it.
Well, you know.
I joined up with you at dance meeting and I asked Candace.
Yeah, but I mean, it was like, Thursday night, you gotta do it, you gotta do it, I'm like, okay, I'll do it, to fill the spot.
I mean, it's not a difficult, it's not a difficult position.
I think it used to be, we used to do a lot more, we don't do a lot now, we used to do a lot more, when I first started, we.
Be doing more.
We, we have not done a lot.
I think COVID was.
Well, it was before, even before COVID, we really didn't do a lot.
Well, I think, you know, the fundraising kind of.
I was gonna say, once the library got built.
So does he need to make a motion to have Bernadette as a write-in?
I think so, I think, um, just if everyone makes a note of it.
Joe Smo could write his name in.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and he would be on, anybody could write their name in, if you're, if it's an empty spot and there's no names, anybody could.
A lot of people do stuff like that, I'm sure.
Donald Duck, yeah.
But if Donald Duck doesn't show up to be sworn in, then.
Oh, my goodness.
Miss out.
So in March, I noticed, um, in Northampton, library trustees, Forbes Library in Northampton, seeks applications to fill two vacancies on the trustee board. These vacancies were created when a change in the board's bylaws was made to increase the number of seats from five to seven. Um, so, you know, we're not the first town that's running into these issues, and I, I think we should try to pursue it. Um, I think when we got you, we had written, I had written a letter.
Yeah.
And put, posted in the newspaper or something, and people came forward and said, um, you know, I'd be interested, I think there were three people who were interested and we had to select one person.
You guys voted at a meeting, I believe.
So.
Maybe the local paper, like the Sentinel.
Yeah, the Sentinel or.
Well, she had an idea that she saw from, what, Meltre Town Library, where they ended up doing a meet and greet to try to hold.
Yeah, they did, they.
Did you, did you go to it?
No, I wasn't around, but, um, you know, so it's something that other communities are actively seeking to increase their trustee board, so. I think we should.
Ideas, yeah.
You know, I might even have the old letters that I had written and may have on my files, I don't know.
Yeah, and I have the, the little narrative that I wrote, um, at our last meeting, that I sent out to like our book group members, the friends, and kind of posted it out there into the, the emails, um.
You'll find someone, it's just, you know, out of the blue, you'll, it'll be like, oh, yeah, just never been asked and never, don't get the newspaper, doesn't listen to the news, doesn't go on Facebook, there's a lot of those out there.
I think of somebody who had shown interest in the past, and I can't think of her name. No, um, James White, White Erica.
Yeah.
You know, she had mentioned at one point, but I know she's busy with little kids, but maybe we can reach out each other.
Candidate.
She, she had mentioned it at one point, I think, when they were doing the landscaping outside.
Yes.
That just came to my mind, so maybe we could reach out to her and see if she wants to be a write-in, or if it's not the right time, at least keep it on her radar. You want me to call her?
Sure.
Yeah. Call her. That'll be great, I'm gonna, I'll make a note of that, that, um, possibility for another write-in, if, it would be easiest if we could get someone else to be a write-in, that way I wouldn't have to go through the trouble of, you know, having to you know, act the fact, bring them to a meeting.
But, and I can think of one other person, I can't think of her name, Maureen's, Maureen's daughter, Maureen, kindergarten teacher.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, yeah.
Oh, I wonder if she would be.
She had also shown interest, I think, in the past.
She's retired.
And she's retired.
Oh, okay, I could reach out to her.
Okay, well, I'll try to get to Erica and then I'll let you know how that goes.
Okay, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Beautiful. We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
When is the vote?
Has to ask questions.
Twenty fifth of May.
Oh, so we're having our meeting before.
We're having the meeting before.
Yeah, May twentieth.
Is that late, the vote?
Yes, it's the earliest. Cuz usually, our meeting is right after the vote.
Yeah. At this year's.
So June will be the first meeting for you, the new slate.
Yeah.
And I know I was talking with Jen today that, um, the committee needs to be formed to, um, for nominations. Cuz they have to meet to get and bring the thing to vote for next month and May.
That would now be, will we be making the committee next month and they would be meeting in June?
I thought everybody, I thought we voted in in June, the committee, I mean, the new people.
That's a team.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think the committee needs to be, um, or the, June, the new people take over, they get voted in in May and they take over in June. So Paula, how many years have you been head?
Uh, one, this is, this is my second year.
This is your second? So she's gonna be up. Yeah, cuz it's two years, yep, so it's, it's, we got the rotating going.
Three years.
That's what she just said, this is her second year.
It's two years.
No, it's, it's two years, as VP, two years as chair, and then it rotates, that's how it was with me. That's cuz it was Linda then me.
Three-year terms, but they.
Right.
But the autism served two years.
Right.
As, as at office.
That was set before Renee and all of them left, or whoever the last person was that they wanted it, when Linda took over, that was two-year terms. Not to say we can't change that, ladies, so.
It will, we'll have to read this in our bylaws. Um, do we wanna create a committee to do that, you know?
I'm confused, what are we creating a committee for?
For the.
For the officer. So the nomination committee, right, they talk to people and, will they ask, right, or you have to accept it, you can't. So I will be on the committee because I'm coming off and.
Okay.
I mean, you wanna.
Sure, I'll, I'll be on it.
Because the problem is, is everybody who's on the committee can't be up for a spot, so we need three.
Right.
So if you and I, cuz we're both leaving, would be two, that opens one more person to, um, to be on. Because we have to ask other people if they'll do the position, and if you're on the committee, you can't, if you, and. If you're on the committee, you wanna be in the position, we have to ask you to leave the committee, so.
You don't wanna be on, on the.
I don't want to be.
No, I don't, right, I'll be on.
No pressure.
I might not get voted in, so.
I don't think, you don't have to worry about that.
You don't have to worry about it.
And so all this.
And the same people do the same job repetitively?
Yes, yes, it's just that it's a two-year chair, two-year VP, the secretary can stay secretary forever, there's no lucky, I mean, there's no limit, but.
I think everybody's doing great.
Yeah, so unless the board changes the ruling, it's a two-year chair, and then they, the, the VP's on for two years to learn the chair position. They help out, they learn, then they move to chair, so it would be Kate moving to chair, Pollock steps down, not to say Pollock does, doesn't say, hey, I'll be VP again, it's a, you know, she just has to push.
Can you still president?
She, she has to rotate according to the rule right now we have, they have to, they have to rotate.
So become president and change the rule.
So, I mean, it's not the same, you guys can't.
Check it back, cuz it used to be.
There was no limit.
There was no limit.
There was no limit, but the people leaving wanted, they want one person to be on it forever, like they had it.
Like our senators.
So.
I thought it was three years.
Oh, you know, it was seven.
No, it was two.
Yep, it was two, two and two, so you're four years in the upper, two years learning, two years to take over, cuz Paula was on, um, two years.
Yeah.
Seventeen years.
Yeah.
Yeah, we may have been two years.
I can't believe it's been two years. Goes by fast, doesn't it by fast, but as I said, it's, it's, you guys can change this, it just needs to be voted on, discussed and voted on, and it goes from there, so. But who's, who knows, Paula may not wanna stay, so that's up to the committee to ask and, you know, and go.
She runs out of the meeting and then.
Yeah.
So you form a committee?
We do.
Is that right?
Yes.
There's three, two of you, three of you, very good, yeah.
And so typically we meet, what we, you would meet before the next meeting, so you would come at five thirty.
Yeah.
Whenever you wanna come, you guys can do it in a different time if you want to, but, um, historically, we would meet before the next trustee meeting, um.
Yep.
Which is nominations.
Which is.
Which is.
May fourteen. So in, in between that, we usually ask, like after this meeting, we kind of ask and say, do you wanna stay? No, yes, you know, and, you know, then we have to ask other people, so, you know, there's Helen and.
Because the first is.
Then, so it's me, so, yeah, yeah.
What we do.
No, I've been on the committee.
Oh, the committee.
And the last thing on my notes is our warrant, we only have one, cuz we met a little late last month. Uh, this one's for one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents, we could pass that down to our fearless leader. It's at Baker and Taylor and the library store.
Except the warrants and.
And have Paula sign them, have the chairs in.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One of our next meeting is Tuesday, May fourteen, unless you ladies have something else you want to discuss.
Quick question, um, what, do we have any idea what the friends are planning for the balance of the year, book sale, plant sale?
Book sale, plant sale, um, I don't think we have any other big fundraisers happening yet, uh, but they've been, um, approving some programming for us, which has been really great, we've been really successful in the fundraisers that you have done, so this year it's looking pretty good so far financially.
Yeah, the, the minutes and everything from them is.
Yeah, standing as an amazing.
Standing, it is.
Have you signed more people? Um, currently we have, um, Lauren has stepped up as president, we have, um, Mary Morse as our vice president. Um, and then we have Hannah as the treasurer and Xander.
That's cool.
I'm sorry, Xander is the treasurer. I'm sorry, Xander is the treasurer and Hannah as the secretary, so for now, we've got a full, full board over there. Um, just not a lot of active participating members as far as like coming to meetings, but as we know.
You just talked about the minutes, are you?
Did everything pass? Yeah, we should all be, nothing yet, um.
Yeah.
When I find out.
I don't, I don't. Slip my radar, but it would be great if we all got to minutes. I think as trustee members, I think it'd be great for all of us to get the minutes of the Friends, you know, be friends too, but.
Yeah, if we should all be friends, but. I can add you all to, I'm the one that does the mailing list, so I can add you all to the mailing list.
What's going on, yeah.
Okay.
Of course, we should be at the meeting.
But then you're probably also gonna get mail asking you to join the Friends if you don't know already.
Support the Friends.
Okay, I will make sure that happens, cause they do, they send out some really good mailing. Hear about the things that are happening and you can get, you know, sign up for things in front of other people. Like all those past cell paintings and.
Cause we used to, we did a sip and paint, it went over really well, we did it at the American Asian, yeah, that went over really, really, and it was a fun night. See, I come back from Vermont for that. I'm gonna be back every week, every, I'm coming home every Sunday and leaving on Monday, so.
Did you go up and see the solar looks?
Oh, yeah, I was up there, with the kids, it was.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, it was a madhouse around.
Getting out of Vermont, I heard.
Well, well, not today, we came on today. Yeah, we did too, I can walk with me. But the people that left at three thirty yesterday that were family friends that were up with us. Said they took thirteen hours to hit the Kaden.
Wow, I had some friends that took seven hours from stove.
Thirteen hours.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anything else? You didn't want to? I think it most should be.
For the sunset, I love it.
Wow, it's neat.